All right, we're gonna follow the meeting's order at six o'clock. We will do invocation. Mr. Cooley, could you do invocation for us, sweetheart?
Sure. Uh, we thank you to this land in which we live. We thank you for the liberty and the freedom that we still enjoy, and the responsibility that goes with that. We ask you to guide us this evening with your spirit. Help us as we deliberate, we make decisions, father, that what we do would be good for this township, and bring glory to you, for I ask it to Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, we can stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just in time! This is time for roll call. All right, Amy, if you could go ahead and do roll call.
Nola?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Michael? Kristi?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
Right. And then if we could get an approval, uh, our motion to approve the agenda.
Above.
Motion by Eugene, support by Nola, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, agenda approved. And then we are gonna move on to approval of past meeting minutes. Um, we probably should separate them just so that we have an approval for each set.
Page, page two of three.
In which set?
The first set.
In March 10?
Uh, yes.
Okay, March 10, page three.
What's Mr. Bumstead's first name?
Um...
John.
John.
John. It says Neil on the first line. I actually read it. Maybe put that in there just to see whether I read it.
Yep, we can introduce that.
Yes, I'll fix it now.
Yeah. All right, any other corrections with those meeting minutes from March 15? All right, can we get a motion to pass the meeting?
I'll make that motion with the adjustment.
Okay, motion by Michael.
Support.
Support by Eugene. Any further discussion? All right, we'll do a all in favor vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, those meeting minutes passed. And then we're gonna move on to the annual meeting of electors' minutes. Uh, there are two sets from March 22nd, so that is the set that is for the electors' meeting. We have any discussion on those? If none, can we get a motion?
Motion to accept the meetings of March 22nd, the board of electors' meeting.
Okay, that one for the, um, electors.
Electors.
Okay. All right, motion by Nola, do we have a support?
Well...
All right, support by Lee. Any other discussion from the board? All right, hearing none, we'll do a all in favor. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, hearing none, those minutes passed. And then we also have the annual budget meeting, um, March, again, March 22nd. Um, any discussion on those minutes? We're very busy in March.
I think motion to accept the board of trustees annual meeting, March 22nd, 25.
All right, motion by Nola. Support. Support by Kristi. Any other discussion from the board? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, meetings, those meeting minutes also passed. And then we'll move on to treasurer's report. Kristi, if you could do treasurer's report.
Um, you'll notice that, um, the interest rate for our investment accounts has slowly come in now. We're down at 4.4%. Um, other than that, we did good in interest again, so not much change to those.
All right, and then we'll move on to paying the bills. Any questions on the pays bill, paying the bills report?
I think you got one question. I'm noticing Comcast bills us three separate bills for the M M. Why are they all in one? What's one property bill?
I think that's how it got, so one must have been paid in this cycle, but really we only get two. And one is for fire and one is for us.
Again, it's the same, same situation. It's just a property.
They're different. They actually have different addresses.
Two separate addresses, two separate zones, everything.
So we get one for the fire department and one for here, and the third one is probably like a bill that was last month that got.
We should look into Starlink. Just a question, just to pose it out there. Um, somebody brought it to my attention, it's like 120. We could have 110 devices hooked up to Starlink.
Ours is like 30 something dollars a month, I think.
Well, no, one is 60 stuff, two are 67, and one is 30, too. That's why it's, I mean, why is it so high?
So typically it's less than 100 in a, in a month, because the 30 and the 60 are added together. The one is probably just like I said, I got paid for eight.
Yeah, 68.
Or not, but in that, in that cycle.
Right. So, yeah, the fire department's only 33 something. Yeah, so again, mine is cheaper than theirs.
Um, they have less, they have less. Ours is also, I believe, the fax. Um, and they don't have that.
Okay.
Yes, chief.
Fire department gets discounted rate to Republican.
All right. We are, we are, we are, but they get the, yeah, they get it, because the...
Federal break.
Okay, so, thank you. All right, any other questions on the bills?
Page seven.
Seven.
Last one, Play Court, not Chief.
Wait, that is the...
Wait, it's, if you look on the next page.
Yeah.
Look on the next page.
Yep.
At the top.
Okay.
On page eight, it's page...
Okay.
So that's the continuing on to that.
I'm just going down through the data. What's this not paid for?
Yes, it shows like the ins and outs, which is kind of like... Amazing.
We made quite a bit on the playground this month, too, right?
Yeah, and that was, um, all from the last budget year.
Yep.
Uh, and that was the installation of the park at Beagle. So, all right, motion to pay bills. All right. There's no other discussion. Motion by Nola to pay the bills. We have a support.
Support.
Support by Eugene. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, do a roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Right. And those passes, motion passes. All right, we're gonna move on to the fire department report, chief. If you could take that.
The thing exciting last month really honestly, all the decrease in the provisions, but it's the first of the month, the new budget year, so we're starting to track upwards of that. Um, after the elections in May, we will be doing the forest and apparatus bay. With that being said, the park lot will have the fire trucks in it for about 10 days. Uh, we'll revamp it, just ask the citizens, pay attention when coming in to have your fire trucks. Uh, other than that, that's about our biggest thing. We have a few little things we bought. A few of the budget that we started this year, uh, the upgrade of the physical maintenance equipment, that'll be well purchased, it should be here in the next couple of weeks. And then we're gonna start to revamp, uh, one of the brush trucks with the help of maintenance. And after that, we're gonna start looking at the place and the one rescue, other than that, we're tracking forward.
All right.
Getting that in some asking.
Yes, 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 maybe. All right, and then Lee, if you would like to do the planning commission report?
Uh, March 35th, and three items on the agenda. One was, uh, which we'll see here later, um, of appearing for the raceway, special land use, uh, get study hours to 7:45 as needed if crash, whatever goes on, um, past their normal hours. Motion approved. Um, second was unfinished business, um, at East McMillan Road for the east, special land use and, um, events venue, wedding venue. Um, lots of discussion and information given about the plans and changes that were made to meet requirements. Kind of helped the applicant nail down the final things to get the, uh, application finalized, uh, postponed, at least till next month's meeting, um, or possible special meeting. Um, last was, uh, 2695, which we will see later tonight as well, um, on Hein Road, the... Oh, shoot, oh, right there, suite space, the... Oh gosh, condo, condominium buildings, as they, they were called. Um, he was just, uh, going over his final plans, could be moved, some setbacks or whatnot. Um, and that was approved and recommended for, for... Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, we'll put that on file. All right, moving to the planning and zoning, zoning staff report. Steve, if you could do that.
March, I issued 13 permits, eight of those work for new houses. Um, in regards to enforcement, we investigated five cases, resolved three. And as the snow has melted, we are starting to receive more complaints.
All right, we can put that on file. And then building and grounds report, Josh, if you would like to go through that.
All right, so we'll start off with, I've got four jobs, um, getting delivered by, and we, our parks and territories. With that being said, I had Pellic, Topo, Duff, the Equestrian Park, Bike Path, Stein, and the Bot Sanctuaries. Not much has been done there, sanctuaries picking up sticks, but maintaining empty gardens. And spend most of the time at Beagle Sports Park, getting that playground put in, then, um, the playground is opened up now, mulches and plays. There's still some dirt around it, I'm gonna finish up, um, taking care of it then next, I hope this week, probably next week. Um, then there's also took some of the dirt and moved it over on the west side, east side, uh, Beagle, to make like a berm that we also had put some of the brush from that storm last year. My plan is to make like flower bed over there, think that'll turn out pretty good. Um, transport station, we had somebody dump quite few trailer loads of brush, and that turned into a big ordeal trying to get rid of that, but after a little bit of time, took care of that. Um, we're gonna get some gutters installed, and then I also had put up a, um, broom and shovel rack there to keep things organized. Just got done leveling that porch, it was tipping pretty bad.
Got some terrible things all over.
And township hub, just got done aerating the, um, lawn today and trying to level out all of the snowplow as well. And lots of things going on, so that's all that we have this month.
Perfect, thank you for that on file. So we are going into the first public comment. We do have a couple of things on the agenda that people will want to talk about. My suggestion is if you have public comment on anything that is in the agenda following, it's probably best to do so at this time. Uh, you can come up and introduce yourself if you would like to. If you would like to not say your name, that's also fine, but come up and do your public comment. Um, we do try to keep it around three minutes, so I'll start, that's what I was doing on my phone. I'll start a little thing. If you start to go over crazy amount, I might say, hey, you're over, like kinda, so, just know in advance. Um, so if anybody has public comment, you may come up and, and give public comment.
Oh, my name is Dan Wilkes. I live on Automobile Road 4963, uh, and this is in regards to the planning commission approving Thunderbird Raceway to go from 11 o'clock to 11:45. Uh, I have a problem with that. It, it has always been 11 o'clock. Uh, you just have a situation right now through the planning commission with a Mr. Tawon, and one of the stipulations was for him was 11 o'clock. Anybody else? It should be 11 o'clock. Thunderbird, I believe, should be 11 o'clock also. Uh, it, their reasoning is, is if they have an accident, uh, then it runs over the 11 o'clock timeframe. My resolution to that is, is instead of starting the race program at 5:30, just start it at 4:30. And then you know that you're gonna be done by 11 o'clock. There's no rhyme or reason why if you can't start that earlier, so you're done by 11. That's, that's one issue. The other one is, uh, the amount of races going from 22 to 25. We as neighbors already give up 22 weekends where you can't entertain anybody on a Saturday night that lives around that area because of the noise level. Uh, now you wanna go to 25, so now there's, there's another three weekends, which is normally at the end of the year, September, still nice weather. And, and so Denver caught them. And then a- as far as the community events, uh, I don't even know, and I think a lot of people don't even know what these community events are gonna be. I mean, I, you know, I, I hear that they wanna have bands. I hear that they wanna have flea markets. I hear that they wanna raise go-karts. Uh, so what is the clarification as far as community events? And it, it says for Sunday. Well, in the paperwork that I received today, it says Sundays or weekdays. So you're opening up the whole week for community events. Now, you've gotta take into consideration the traffic coming out of Michigan Adventure, and that's at the same time around 8 o'clock. If, if it's supposed to be over at 8 o'clock, you have a ton of traffic that you have to deal with. I think that as the board sitting here today should take a real hard look at, at what they mean by community event. And if you're gonna hold other people to the 11 o'clock timeframe, I, I believe that Thunderbird should be held to 11 o'clock also. They can start earlier. You're, you're gonna hear that some people that race, they have to work on Saturday, and they're not able to show up at that time. Well, you wanna support your family, or do you wanna support your hobby? It, you know, that's what they have to lay out. That's not my responsibility, that's their own responsibility to do that. Uh, if you can't make the race, you can't make the race, but nevertheless, you should start earlier. The only other thing I wanna bring up is the decimals. Uh, most dirt tracks run at 130 decimals. Okay, they say that they, they will stay under the 100 decimal limit. I need to know, and I think the board should need to know, where that decimal reading is taken from. It should be no more than 50 feet away on the straightaway at full throttle, uh, with no impediments whatsoever, not on automobile road, not on Riley Thompson Road, not at the edge of the property, but 50 feet from the straightaway where they're at full throttle. If they can't meet that, then they have to do something about it. Years ago, we, we had the same issue come up, and they were supposed to run with mufflers. Do, does anybody here know whether or not they run with mufflers? That needs to be checked into. So as far as I'm concerned, if nothing else, I believe that the board should table this until they find out all these particulars that are going on, so we can all get along as a community, neighbors and Thunderbird. Nobody wants to shut down Thunderbird. We just want it to be fair. You know, we want everything to be fair for everybody. So, and as far as the community events, there again, I was under the assumption it was gonna be Sunday, but in, in the paperwork, it says Sundays or weekdays. So now you've opened up a whole week to community events. You know, and, and there again, I heard that they wanna have concerts, bands. So if they have that band, them bands on Sundays, now there goes the neighbors' Sundays, as far as entertainment or anything. There's no quiet period, yeah. So I think it's something that the board really needs to look at. I think they need some feedback on the planning commission or whatever you have to do. But I don't feel that you guys should make a declaration that right now as it stands. So that's, that's what I want to say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you too.
All right, any other public com?
I support everything Dan sent.
All right, thank you.
I'm the owner of Thunderbird.
It's good to know. My name is Lynn Young, I live on Automobile Road as well. I've lived in this community 80 years now. It would be really good if things get changed, we are notified of this, especially because we're so adjacent to this situation. Absolutely love Thunderbird, and I hope they go and are successful, but I would like you to think about what Dan suggests, that we need to look at some things. Because you have a traffic situation here that is phenomenal with Michigan Adventure, so, and with Thunderbird, there could be some real terrific merit. There is sometimes when cannot get out of, from automobile onto Riley Thompson at all. We have to go the other way to Michalinda to get out, so. You need to think about the traffic situation. Will there be parking on the road on Riley Thompson at Thunderbird? Has that been addressed at all? You need to think about that. So I would like you to take some time to look at this before you make a definite change or adjustment. I want them to be successful because I think, oh, we need this in this community, but we need to be careful with the traffic situation and what's happening, because we have huge amounts of traffic here with Michigan Adventure, so. I would appreciate your work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me get you.
All right, any other public comment? You wanna come up, Mrs. Paul?
No, I just wanna comment on those cemetery roads. They're wonderful.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right, any other public comment?
I have a question before we move on.
Mm-hmm.
So when we get to this item, does, do they, does anybody have a, an opportunity to speak then about it, or is this the time?
So, if you have to speak on it, it would be now, because the planning commission did a public hearing, which would be what that would be, like opening it up to the public. Once we get there, unfortunately, we'll have passed the public comment, and we're not doing a public hearing, so we would just be making a decision.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I, I'd like to suggest, too, that my property doesn't button up to Thunderbird.
Lynn does.
Lynn does. She wasn't notified of anything, uh, and none of the other neighbors were. But I would like to make a suggestion that when you have a situation like this where that noise travels so far, that everybody within a half a mile should be notified if there's gonna be any changes or, you know, to what's going on.
We're here on Middle Lake Road, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a given. Because nobody, there's, there's a lot of people that live around me that I told that couldn't make the meeting tonight. And, and they just found out about it through me. And, and so, you know, the thing of it is, is I, I believe that when you have a situation like this where you're dealing with that much noise or anything, uh, people, people need to be notified of what's happening so they can come and give their two cents.
Yep. Great, thank you, I appreciate that. All right.
Am I allowed to say anything or do or...
Yeah, it, it's public comment. You're welcome to come up and give comment.
Please do. So I'm Heidi Maral, and I own Thunderbird Raceway. Scott went out here, is my general manager, and Melissa Beebe is one of my core staff. First of all, we've been running till, till 11, the curfew is 11 o'clock, okay? We need it a little bit longer just in case of races. I own the track, it's in my third season. I was done at 11, 11:30, whatever. Tom Sprague's had it before that. Blackmer, Mike Blackmer had it in between. The community events that you are questioning will not run till 11 o'clock at night. They're not racing. We would like to bring in children on a Sunday, teach them how to run their little race cars on a Sunday afternoon. As far as bands, if the, the, there's a misconception of what you guys are thinking. I'm thinking like a two, it's a two-person band. Well, I did get interviewed by M L, and they didn't actually go into all of the detail. I do have Fox 17 coming out next week, so we're gonna get into more detail with that. But let's say Scott and Melissa have a little two-piece band. We're just gonna put them up by the general admission, and they're gonna play for hours. That's it. It's not this layering music.
We don't need electric force, honey.
No.
I know, but what I try to do is get more people from the community involved.
Yeah.
Thunderbird. We've mentioned Dalton Days.
Yes.
We, they want me to do Dalton Days. So is there gonna be objection if I did the Dalton Days at Thunderbird Raceway? No.
The, the thing of it is, is it's not that the community events are being held. It's just that nobody knows what is actually gonna be held.
I don't, we don't know yet. Everything is to be determined.
It's, as far as Dalton Days, that's a given.
Right.
You're doing something for the community, for the...
Right, but I'm also doing something for the community to bring kids in, so they can learn about race cars, so they can talk to the race car drivers. So when we do have an auger night, we do not have time for all those kids to come out on this track and say, hey, Scott, I really wanna talk to you about your race car. Doesn't have times, we have races to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know, and we are very in tune to making sure that all racing is done by 11, but if something happens on that track, we have to have that extra time. We had, last year we had a fire right up through the pit chute. Took us a good half hour. Good thing we had the extra time. Does it mean that we're gonna race until 11:15, 11:30? No, it means we are gonna be done with racing at 11 o'clock.
So, so my question is then, why do you need the stipulation to go to 11:45?
Because if we have a wreck, and it takes 45 minutes to take care of, that 45 minute is our buffer.
So you can't start the race program earlier?
No.
Why?
We have too many people that can't get to the track. A lot of them come in from out of town.
Right.
So that's my business, that's my income.
I, I understand, but if the gates open at 2 o'clock, you're telling me that people...
They don't open at 2.
We need to remember that this is also her time to do public comment, so...
So our gates for the pits, for the drivers to get there, we can open up, we open them up at 3, unless there's a special event, and then we bring them in. We open up at 3, Johnson's, then at 4. We are done by 11 o'clock. If there's an accident, there's an accident. We have to take care of it. And if it takes us a half hour to take care of, then we're gonna go into the 11:30 curfew time. But there is no way we are gonna be racing until 11:45.
Yeah, right.
We, we have, have you been to the track?
I, I've been there numerous times.
Have you been there since last year?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so last year, we were down almost every single night at 11 o'clock.
There was two times that you run till 11:30.
And both of those were accidents.
Both the times were with huge accidents. We, we backtrack. We, we keep, we keep track of everything.
I understand, I, and, and there again, I'm not, I, I'm not trying to shut anything down. But my thing is, is the planning commission put stipu, put stipulations on other people to be done at 11, period, 11 o'clock. I, I see no reason why that anybody else should get an extension to that time, just because.
But it's a totally different type of...
I, I get that, totally different, I get it, but...
Yeah, since we've already been running till 11 for like the last 34 years.
Can, can we bring it back here for just a second, 'cause, um, the board, I mean, we're, we're not trying to have a public hearing, but also to make a better informed decision, we would like to be able to ask some questions. Um, what was the question that you had, Michael?
So, my question is, to, to, and what was brought up before, uh, or one of my questions anyway, is what is the possibility of starting a little earlier?
It's very hard to start earlier on a Saturday when people are coming from Traverse City, or, I mean, all these, all these racers, we've already, we already started early. We're starting at 5:30.
Okay, so not, 5 o'clock wouldn't work.
It would be...
It would be rough.
It would be very rough to start at 5.
I, I also wanted to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, we would probably be able to correct me on this, but just for everybody's awareness, I believe the last two years that I've been here, we have had the same resolution come up to extend the hours. And, so that's been granted for at least the last two years.
Since I've been back in office since 2011.
So this is, this is nothing new. Uh, I am pleasantly, I, I'm happy to hear that you've only had two incidents, and that your plans are not to go past that 11 o'clock point.
I don't wanna be their pets at 11.
I don't wanna work at 11.
I also wanna say that I can sympathize with everyone that spoke, because I live close, and we live with it, so I, I'm with you.
Right.
Uh, but, yeah.
Are there mufflers on the race cars?
Yes. We actually, okay. I just wanna let you know... I just want to let you know, we tested at the end of the straightaway in the back stretch where there's the least amount of buffer.
Right.
And we were at ninety decibels.
We test all the time.
We had, we had a we had somebody that we thought was way too loud. So we actually went out there and tested it. And we actually tested the late models and they were at the same, and they're our noisiest class. And every year, or every night, I try to run the four cylinders last and I get feedback from the four cylinders, but I don't care. They they say that you guys say that you don't need the quiet cars to run last, and I'm like, yes, they do. They, I mean, a lot of them are, a lot of the four cylinder guys are from this township and they go, well, the township never said that.
You appreciate it.
I try to make them that way, so.
So I always run last.
As running the show, I want the show to get done as quickly and efficiently as fast as I possibly can. I don't try to run late and that's not my plan.
And I think part of the, part of what we're running into a little bit too, in the opposite of like not so much the time thing as well, but the community events, like yes, we want community events, but having the to be determined and not, not knowing what it could potentially be or what the traffic could potentially be or what, what, like how many people are you planning on pulling?
If we bring the kids in, so we already have a
Oh yeah, it's probably just going to be like
We have a mini watch class, there's forty, what, forty, fifty cars. But we want
They're going to haul more in.
We're talking about that type of thing, so let's say we reach out to the schools, hey, any kids who are interested in what these mini watches are all about? Come on out. I don't foresee it being more than a hundred people right there in that front row. You know, I really, we're not talking like a regular night of racing. It's absolutely can't, which is, that's too much, what we're trying to do is teach. And if you have a hundred people or more than a hundred people, we're not going to be able to teach. We even want to be able to say, I had somebody say, hey, you know, my wife does not know how to charge her car battery or or charge it up or whatever, we want to do classes like that, it's not like we're
Right.
One of the concerns that I'm hearing from the neighbors is they don't know what's going to be going on.
Well, you know.
Okay, but I mean, but as soon as you do know, or as soon as things start to develop, is there any way that those immediate neighbors, you give those addresses and mail them something and say, hey, here's what's going at this point for the next month?
I can do that and I also can encourage everybody to like the Thunderbird Raceway page.
There you go.
I mean, that's where I put everything. I mean, and we're also, we're right in the middle of doing neighbor passes. So if they live within a half mile, they get a neighbor pass for free, they get to come in and see them all year.
Yeah.
All you got to do is go there and fill out your address.
Oh, is that what, okay.
That's the next post in there.
No, I don't know that either.
So you have, well, then you have to like hit the page, right? That's unfortunately, social media is where it's at and that's what I use as my tool for having.
We would like all of you to
Yeah.
So you're saying that all the late models have muffler though? Yes. What kind of mufflers? They're short view eight twenties, they all have to have them. It's a, it's a rule across the board. It's a rule across the board and UMP. And we just follow their rules.
We have a whole set of rules that all these classes have to follow, and if they don't follow, they get just proud of it.
Who takes the decimal readings? Not lying. But I think that something should be, it should be investigated by the township itself.
So Amy has, Amy has a question as well.
You don't, you don't have people parking on the road that don't?
No, no.
Okay, I actually don't think that they, one, I don't think that you physically could, because I don't think there's
We do sometimes have some traffic when we're coming in and we try to go out and run along the parking lot to keep from traffic.
Drag strip at the crab zone, I know they, they've offered you space to park cars. So there's plenty of room, yeah.
As far as traffic, we run into Michigan Adventure traffic all the time. So we're working around their traffic.
So are you saying that the noise will stop at eleven or eleven forty-five?
There will not be any new races started at eleven o'clock, so you won't hear anything after eleven o'clock.
Except people leaving.
If there's a race that needs to be finished, we're not done with at eleven. So I work in the tower, giving all the points, making sure the races are, keep going. And we generally time some of them, like you have this many laps, you're only getting this many minutes. If there's a big accident, we do take that into consideration. So if there's anything after eleven, it'll be a race that's already started and we're just finishing it. So it wouldn't be a new race started after eleven.
And it wouldn't start five minutes before?
No. Okay, so it's going to be my next thing, you're not like afraid of that?
In all honesty, I would like it to be done at ten thirty.
Right.
Well, there again, if you'd like to be done at ten thirty, I'd say you could start earlier. I think, I think if you guys couldn't start earlier, I think you're trying to make an excuse of people coming out of town and stuff.
Race trucks, sorry.
The race will be there.
Well, I don't think there's very many.
This is the only one on this side of the state.
I was going to say.
For the last one, I'm not going to say it's there.
Winston must have closed, that was the one in the house.
And people come from all over.
And you have to take that into consideration, she's operating a business and she has every right to operate her business.
I understand that.
Like we can't control when there's a fire alarm going off and here goes a fire truck at two in the morning, we can't.
I understand that, I understand that part.
But yet you want people to come on weeknights for
Weeknights.
Things, even not until
Weeknights, they have to be done by eight o'clock. And everyone
I'm talking starting time.
Weeknights?
That's what it says in there.
That's for the community events.
We would start
All right, guys, I'm going to ask, like, let's bring it back in a little bit here. Just in, we will, we will get back to it and the board will discuss. Does the board have any other question, I mean, at this time? Any other public comment on any other agenda items?
I guess, I was on the original planning commission, when they reopened the raceway and they assured us they would rerun eighty-five and ninety decibels.
Okay.
So we set that parameter.
And you guys said ninety is like what you're
But they're saying up to a hundred decibels.
Right. All right. Any other public comment on anything else? That was a really short part, I appreciate it. All right. We're going to move on to decision items. The first one that we have is on the land sale. Remember there's like a, we got like setbacks a month, but the land sale is here, you got the So we had set the minimum bid to three thousand five hundred, we did end up getting two sealed bids. So we'll open those up and then the board will determine which one we want to, which one we want. All right. So the first bid is for the price. For the minimum bid amount.
So that was for thirty-five hundred?
Yes. And the second bid is the same. So I guess I can read read what they say. So this first, the first one is from Karma Adams, who did the land bid, the other parcels that are over in that area too. This isn't exactly touching, it's kind of like adjacent to the other ones that she had already purchased and kind of decided, it was too late for her to add it into the bigger chunk that she did. And so this got added in after the fact, so that's the first bid that we opened. The second one is we are submitting this letter as our official sealed bid to approve for the above reference vacant parcel in Dalton Township. We are offering three thousand five hundred for the property, which meets the stated minimum bid requirement. Please find our contact information above, we are prepared to provide payment in accordance to the township. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process. This is last, last weeks, Anthony and Amanda last weeks. They didn't like have any other information in here other than that, I can, if you guys want to look at it, make sure I'm up there.
So no information on what they're going to do with the property? What about the first one, what does she want to do with it?
That's exactly the one that put in the bid.
Karma. Yeah, Karma's the one, Karma's the requester, so. Yep, she requested it and she had was initially going to put it in with the bigger chunk, but she gave it to Jeff late, and so when it got Yeah, I think those smaller parcels that are like kind of adjacent to it, yeah, over in that area is what she had purchased. And she's going to have to build up, like, that's not a road, it's like an easement, so she's going to have to build up in that area too. So I'm not a hundred percent sure what her goal is to do with it, but.
Yes, I don't know, they're the same amount, I'll make a motion to approve the bid for thirty-five hundred dollars or I can sell twenty-five oh two for the question of the
For Karma?
Yeah.
All right, motion by Lee, support by Nola, any discussion from the board? That was the first one, she was the one who requested it. All right, hearing no discussion, we will do a roll call vote. Heather? Yes. Eugene?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Amy, yes. All right, motion passes. And then we are going to move on to the next decision item, which is budget amendments again? So I was fully confident in the budget meeting that I did the fourth quarter adjustments accurately and then quickly learned that I was wrong. So the ones that are, sorry it's sideways for you guys, but the ones that are bolded are the ones that I needed to adjust after. And that was because bills came in that were really supposed to be for March, but they were trickling into the beginning of April. But they were for last year's fiscal year. So I started cutting numbers and I was like, we're doing so good, and then it fills and I was like, yeah, we shouldn't have done that. So those are those adjustments. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Something we got to do, I know we approve it.
All right, motion by Eugene to approve those budget adjustments, support by Nola. And then any discussion from the board?
What, bottom line, what did that do, did it balance out?
I mean, I don't know that it, I think we were still under. Yeah, we were still under, but it our, like, general ledger now will balance for like the bills that we paid out and stuff, so. We want that. Yes. Yeah. All right, if we could get a roll call vote? Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi? Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes. All right, I did warn them this was a big packet. The next thing is the brining program, we do the cyber here. We usually do the regular and optional in that contract. So you'll see that at the top, we, there's like the brining program is the first one, the second one is optional, we usually do both. But we can have any discussion if we feel we so need, otherwise we can get a motion to approve it. I feel like we pay it while the things are happening, so like we get bills through from the road commission throughout the year, so.
Is it the three totals that are highlighted in the yellow?
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yep, so it would be the total of those three highlighted. And we don't want to opt out. I would highly recommend not do.
Make a motion to approve the regular and optional brining contract, we speak to the road commission in twenty twenty-five.
All right, motion by Nola, do we have a support? Support by Michael? All right, and then any discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll roll a call vote. Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Amy, yes. All right, motion passes. All right, the next thing that we have is kind of like a side quest, I guess. The Red Cross asked if we would be willing to fill out forms to be a shelter facility in case of a emergency? Like how we have the, like we have really bad windstorms or tornado or whatever. But in the event of a disaster, that we can use this building as a shelter. We would have to fill out the agreement and then also qualify. We might qualify more so now because of the generator, which I would say that that is a very good reason to do it. Any discussion from the board?
This be in lieu of the fire station or in addition to?
In addition to.
Just this room? The whole building?
I mean, it's a disaster, so we wouldn't be doing business, I don't think, we would be
They take over the whole building, they're supposed to pay for the utility uses? Like how are you going to prove that utilities they use? I'm not in favor of it, just because this is not that big of a building. And we have some pretty important We have a lot of expensive equipment in this place.
And, and documents as well.
Right. I'm not interested in this myself.
The building isn't that big.
No.
And we're talking a shelter, what are we, are we bringing in cots or what? To me, it doesn't, it doesn't have them.
It's not big enough.
I just was thinking we got these generators to like keep stuff powered, that like if there was an emergency, that we would utilize it.
If there's an emergency, we don't need the Red Cross, y'all hear that?
Mr. Kui said it. All right, I support him, Mr. Kui.
So on the other side of that, we could specify, this room could be used and limit it to that, what about the shop? Is there room in the shop?
We can, we can not do it, we don't have to do it.
Somebody gets more no than yes.
It sounds like it's meeting that way.
Fire barn is already like
Yeah, so to clarify for the community, we do have a shelter at the fire barn, the fire barn is through the Red Cross, they have all that stuff set up. So if there was an emergency, they would use the fire barn as well, so. This was just kind of like an in addition to thing, so it's not that there is nothing in the community that would do that, so.
So I guess
it's turned to requirements.
Yeah, there is like a, we would have to apply to even see if we met all of their specs, but this was more like, do we want to start that process?
That's not a good chance for you to do all of that.
Right.
Yeah, if you're talking about food, like really, there's only a sink and stuff back here, and a microwave, so they're not prepping massive amounts of food here. I mean, they have a kitchen and stuff over there, but I mean, most likely they're going to be bringing in more stuff, they don't have to
Right. Yeah.
I don't know, it would be nice to be able to, if people, you know, places where things are that they don't need to begin to do, kind of thing, so.
And I can see the concern, I think in a true emergency, this room would probably maybe be made available. Let's set up some cots, you know, come and stay.
Right.
Getting into this area where we've got more sensitive things, the answer would be no.
And I think like in a true, true emergency, like. National Guard will step in and they'll just tell us they're taking our chase.
Yeah.
So, um, they're not gonna, they're gonna use whatever's available, so.
I mean.
I mean, I could, I couldn't least see like, another option is for me to like put the, put our specs in there and see what we would even call, like what we'd qualify for and bring it back. Before I sign any sort of agreement.
I think that would be a waste of your time.
Hi.
You've got enough things to do.
I do have a lot of things to do.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I am always my problem over information, but like at the same time.
Yeah.
We're not gonna turn people away.
Right, right, right.
So we're gonna open this. They're already. They're already a base station over here. If we need overflow, imagine.
There's.
It's part of, of the township, this part of townships, we're probably gonna be utilizing this space that we have.
Yeah, alright, any other discussion from the board? Alright.
A move, we do not pursue it at this time.
Alright, motion by Mr. Kui to not pursue the shelter facility through Red Cross. And support by Nola. Alright, any other discussion? And then we will, this was actually an all in favor, so I guess all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same time? Say the for man out, sorry guys. Alright. We will move on. Eugene's motion passes, we are not going to report. Okay. The next thing is the resolution for the charitable gaming facility. This was through the archery club. Um, they do raffles there. And this was just so that they could have it, um. Certified that they're able to do raffles. Um.
So have they been doing raffles?
Um, I don't know that they've necessarily been or are wanting to or whatever the thing is, but. Uh, we do this the same for, it looks almost identical actually to what we do for liquor licenses. So this is just through the state saying that they have the, uh, charitable, charitable gaming license. So. That is what this resolution is for.
Do I have to do a raffle?
So they do raffles?
They do do raffles. I look at their Facebook page and they do raffles, so.
There's no face.
Maybe this is to make it legal.
Yeah, right, raffle, that's like, I confirm, organize, I'm concerned, like, what's up? So, but they're coming to us and wanting us to approve it, so they're trying to do.
They're trying to do it the right ways.
Do the things that they need to do, so.
They'll make a motion to pass a resolution twenty twenty five dash ten to allow for charitable gaming license at MB Archery Foundation.
Motion by Michael, do we have a support? Support, support by Amy. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Alright, motion passes. We are gonna go ahead and move on to the resolution for Thunderbird. Um, we've already discussed this too, so I don't need to really re- reintroduce it, but. They, you'll see the resolution here, um. And it's in the package.
My question is, where in here does it talk about decibels? Cause that was a point of discussion.
I think that's in the. Those four parts of events.
Is that something we said?
That's, that's, no, that's in our, it's only in those.
It's already in place.
Oh, please, this is, this is just a special use permit.
If we can have, I'm gonna ask, uh, our expert here.
Oh, okay.
So the special land use approval from twenty sixteen specified a decibels. A copy that I found on municode has that section blank. But the meeting minutes where the planning commission recommended approval in. April of twenty sixteen. Um, they placed a condition that. Vehicles and other operations should not exceed a hundred decibels at all points along all property lines. So it was set at a hundred. Back in twenty sixteen.
Okay. Um, what I, what I heard from our owners is that they would make a commitment to not go past ninety. Are you still standing by that?
I won't go over a hundred. I, I can't. I can't guarantee that on a night that one isn't gonna powder their net. You know, but, um, I would like to keep them near, or near night. I, I don't want them to be any louder than they have to. They all have mufflers on them and they all are required to have mufflers on them. They won't hit the racetrack without them.
Well, what I heard in the discussion earlier was I heard ninety a lot. And that was a concern of the neighbors. And so. I don't know if that can be amended or.
What did you, what is yours, uh? Oh, cause that would be going back and changing. That wouldn't be in this resolution.
Okay.
Um, so I'd be changing something different.
So we are amending a special land use.
Hmm.
That was already approved.
Okay.
And our ordinance does not permit changes to the existing special land use unless there's mutual agreements between the applicant and. The object.
And I apologize, I guess this is just mostly dealing with the time. Extending it.
Yeah, uh, and that was, I mean, that's a very valid question though, because that was something that was brought up as one of the concerns, so. Um. And also before we move forward too, I wanted to give out to the board because I believe that we should be transparent. My property.
Oh, yeah.
Is the back of the racetrack. So that being said, um, I don't have, I don't stand to gain anything. Financially, but I don't want to vote on it if we feel like that is a conflict of interest. So. I don't know where you guys are at on that. I'm not, like I said, I'm not gaining anything financially or, but I know like. I mean, racetrack or anything.
Who won the, who won the? Who on the board lives within earshot of that?
I mean, like all of us. Okay, I just wanted to be transparent because my, like I said. I, I, I share yards, so I don't wanna like, I want, I wanna be fully transparent so that people aren't like, well, Heather, let's right there. So anyway.
So I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash eleven for three fifty West Riley Thompson Road. It's giving issue for a twelfth or five, there's a raceway amendment to special land use permit.
Do we have any other, just, I was gonna say one more thing actually too. So do we have any other discussion?
Okay, discuss, we have support. Support.
Okay, I was gonna say, we didn't discuss it before I even said that I needed a motion, but, so.
And what, what we're doing is, is repeating what we did last year.
What we've already talked about.
See, this was, other than they've got three days.
So my thing that I would like to discuss is actually not on the topic. So the thing that I would like to discuss is the. Um, to be determined dates, like the, the community events. Wanting to know if it would be feasible or on those things, instead of you having to send out a letter to, to all of those people. Maybe having something where you come in or communicate with the zoning administrator and get, get that approval. Like it doesn't have to be like a special thing every time, but just a, hey, this is what the thing is, just so we can make sure we're not breaking any of our.
To let you know.
Like, I don't wanna set, I don't wanna set her up for failure.
Well, yeah, and I'd rather not, I mean, yeah, I see something.
Even I thought before, I mean, he's.
You know, would this need a, um. Actually, that thing, like, I don't wanna try, cause I don't wanna charge people to do things.
I mean, and, and the, the two things. Because nobody's following through and giving you a commitment, yeah.
So I'm trying, trying that.
Well, can you let them know?
I can let you know, hey, we're gonna have a mini wedge class.
Well, I, I think what she's saying is we have a monthly meeting. If someone could come in and say, hey, here's our schedule for the next month. So you know, we know what's going on.
Or, yeah, just, just some, something, and we can determine like, I just feel like there should be communication. Because one, not setting you up for failure, so like you do an event that like isn't, like. That's not gonna meet something and then you end up getting in trouble, breaking a rule that you didn't know existed. I don't want that either, uh. So I think just having some sort of communication, either reaching out and having communication, some sort of documented communication.
I don't know how to do that. And then again, I gotta have people follow the Facebook page.
Right, or going to the, or going to the meeting. I don't know what's more feasible for you. What do you think?
Can I say just one thing?
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't think it's so much about the community events, home of the community events. I think more than anything on Sundays would be a noise back.
Right.
If there's a, if there's a big noise back.
Right.
Whether, you know, even through the weekdays, if there's a big noise back. That's, and, and the traffic, you know, that's.
Right.
That's gonna be taken into consideration.
So, with, once a month, on a Wednesday evening, and we're done at eight o'clock, or it's on a Tuesday evening, we have practice from four to eight.
Hmm.
It's been like that for as long as I've been around that track.
Right.
That's.
So that's.
Right.
The testing too.
Right, and that's.
And that would every Wednesday.
Always gonna stay.
Well, it's usually.
And. And.
Or Tuesday.
How is somebody like? Yeah, if you were on Sunday, like have like a very large, like, very large band thing or whatever that would be.
And like if we do an event where we're teaching kids, it's, it's not annoying.
Yeah.
It's small.
So.
It's gonna be done by eight o'clock.
I would more so like to see, uh, while you're, and this is like your first year doing these like community events.
Yeah, this is a change.
So I think having that in there just for this year, like, let's see how it goes, would be my recommendation, like having something where it is brought. Something documented for those special events, just so that we have it.
Like a trailer.
And we're not like breaking rules. Like I said, I don't wanna set it up to, to fail.
Right.
So if we could have that, I think that would be.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
And it's not like we're gonna have a mosh pit or have you got a band or.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, I mean, that's not for the kids.
Right, right. Any other discussion from the board? I don't know if I should make, I don't know if I should make a motion.
So you already did.
We say with the original, do we want to make that amendment into this?
The, um, making a motions. To adopt the resolution twenty twenty five eleven. Was, uh, three fifty West Riley Thompson Road. Thunderbird Raceway Amendment to Special Land Use Permit with the foreknowledge of the events a month in advance. Does that sound right?
Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, motion by Nola. Still supported by Eugene. Any other discussion from the board? Alright, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Motion passes. And then we have the next thing is the resolution for speed base, which is another amendment. Um, they have got through, those process are ready. Um, and this has, is a recommendation already from the planning commission, so. Any discussion on this resolution?
Something you checked out, right, Lee?
Yes.
Move that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Eugene. Support. Support by Nola. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Nola?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay. The last resolution is for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee bylaws. Um. We, we do not require them to have bylaws, but bylaws are marked, so. Just so they know, um, those are in the packet as well. So this is just a resolution stating that as a board, we support those bylaws.
I make motion to pass the resolution twenty twenty five thirteen for board agreement to be established for the parks. And recreation advisory committee bylaws.
Alright, motion by Nola. Support by Amy. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Abstain.
Um.
Yeah.
You can still vote.
I haven't read the thing. Trying to know who I wanna say yes or no.
Um.
Yes, I abstain.
Um, we can't abstain unless it's for, or for a financial reason, um, just like how we can't, um, not vote.
It's, it's basically bylaws, just like when we have our board meeting, we have to abide by the same rules.
They're the same ones that were discussed in the park.
Okay.
Just the, just.
I'll say yes, under duress.
Under duress. Guys witnessed it. Nola?
Yes.
The train.
Heather?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Board second.
Alright, motion passes. So now we're just into the. Metro, oh yeah, there's only. Discussion items. This was just more so for the board to know what was going on too. They have, um, Metro Act does like. Through the Metro Act, people have the ability to do things, uh, rights away and such, so this was like a map over by, they have a project going on down by, um. Words are hard, Michigan Ventures. So, this was just more of, uh, for your information, in case you get asked any questions about it, you know what's going on and.
You're right.
Yeah. So, that. So many specifics, okay. And then now. Any other things that anybody needs to talk about? No?
Okay.
Um, we will move to the next public comment. That's the public comment.
That's right, exactly. Robin is a. Two seven nine five now we call. I just found it interesting that the Red Cross had approached us for doing, um. Disaster help. And I, I, I don't know what brought that about, other than I know, um, Steve has had reports. Month after month, the last couple of years, it's been, um, an amazing amount of, um, new home building. Not just everything else, but the homes that are being built. So I feel like the township is getting bigger and bigger and I know you all know where I'm going with this.
How would you?
But, um, you know, we need to, we do need to keep that in the back of our mind, that we do need. Some type of a community center, whether it's backed, and I know the federal funds these days are a little bit wonky, but, um. You know, something that we could take care of a disaster relief. I, I do not know that Michigan had thirteen. Reported, I mean, confirmed tornadoes on March thirty first.
Yeah.
And we also had the big ice storms in north, in northern Michigan and all in the U.P. The big bridge was shut down for how many days? I mean.
Right.
And it's, I mean, it's a matter of time before this area gets hit with something big. It's been a while. But it's gonna happen and then, you know. Where are all these people in this area gonna go?
Right.
So, just saying.
Yeah.
And Rachel would like to say that by the best.
Or you want to.
Uh, anyway, but, uh, no, that's just my comment. That it's, it's kept in the back of our mind. I mean, we have small communities that have big. Shelter, big community rooms, you know, and to be, you know, help, well, it used to be to be helped with the federal funding is that you had to provide. A kitchen area, showers, cots, that kind of thing, which, you know. Anyway, and I know the township does have property that we could use.
I've been watching for grants.
I know.
Nothing there, nothing.
Oh, yeah, not right now.
Right now, it would be a millage.
Yeah, yeah, but anyways, just people need to keep it in mind.
Yes.
Just keep it in your mind.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other public comment?
Hello, I'm Treyne, Minister of Santiago, Carmin, we're from the Public Health Department with the Community Outreach. So we're just coming in to listen into the needs and wants of the community, uh, kinda put our faces out there too, because we are not in this area that often, so if you have any local events that you wanna sit, we usually come out and give out little free things and teach about the programs that we have.
Awesome, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, any other public comment? That shut itself down, by the way. All right, no other public comments, then we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Nola, do we have a support? Support by Lee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right.
Seven ten.
Seven ten.